Good evening, Chair. Calls the order of public hearing for Bill 23-037, Habitat Protection Area Zoning, Chapter 267-63.9. Mr. Richardson, Ms. DeBois.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, thank you all very much. Monique Richardson, Jr., here on behalf of the County Executive's Office with the Department of Law.
DeBois.
Half of the law department.
Just briefly, Mr. President, we're here with the Habitat Protection Bill. Just a little bit of an update for you as to the reason we are bringing this before you tonight. Normally, we would have our experts here, but Matt and Alex are unfortunately, they're also sitting on the Environmental Advisory Board, which sits tonight at 12:00. So you've got the second string. We'll do the best we can to answer any questions you may have. If we're unable to, we can get those gentlemen and get questions answered.
Okay.
So we'll just give you a brief summary or the history of the critical area program. So the Hartford County Critical Area Program was developed in response to the Chesapeake Bay initiatives enacted by the State of Maryland. In particular, the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Act of 1984, as amended, and the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Program Development Criteria approved by the General Assembly in 1986. So originally, our local program was approved in June of 1988, and then the county did comprehensive updates in 1996, 2002, 2011, and 2022. So that last update in 2022 became effective in August 22nd, '22. And then what happened was the state updated the Hartford County Natural Resource Inventory in that same month, unfortunately after the update. So they gave us additional time to go ahead and update our own program in response to that and our maps. So here we are, bringing forth this legislation in response to the state's request to update our maps and our code.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, you have anything else to add?
Mr. President, just to add to that, under Title 27 of COMAR, this is what we're required to do. We're required to adopt what the state has directed us to require.
And Ms. DeBois, if I recall, you said there were very minor changes to the maps?
Well, right. There were minor changes to the maps, but all of those changes were in direct response to what the state had mandated us to change.
Okay. Counsel, anytime. Anyone for questions? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon, has anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Well, no one signed up. This will conclude this public hearing, and we'll look at it at another meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And then we'll go ahead and take a recess. Good evening, Chair. Calls the order legislative session day 24-003. Please join us for the pledge, stand for the pledge, and the prayer after by Councilman Jan Jardano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Gracious and almighty Creator, as we gather here today to conduct the business of this council, we seek your guidance and wisdom. Grant us the patience to listen attentively, the courage to speak with honesty and integrity, and humility to consider diverse perspectives. Guide us in our pursuit of the common good and inspire us to work together for the betterment of our community. Please watch over Hartford County and our first responders. We offer this prayer in the spirit of unity and with gratitude for the opportunity to serve. Amen.
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 Agenda number four, presentation of proclamations due to the snow and inclement weather. Both of these presentations have been postponed and will be rescheduled for the future. Agenda number five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations, executive appointments, commissions on disabilities. Mr. Guthrie.
Mr. President, I appoint Monique Eric to the executive appointment to commission on disabilities, the student representative.
I believe that's a motion.
A motion to approve.
Approve.
Yes.
Yes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Jardano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Manay Ek, I believe it is, student representative. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Cultural Arts Advisory Board, Mr. Jan Jardano.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointments of Cynthia Barbie, Janet Embry, Aaron Fulford, Barbara Ketchum, Tatina Lavon, Richard Morgan, Susan Nikolides, Susan Snenden, Jane Knapp, and the reappointments of Paul Chuck Bowden, Glenda Devaney, William Rothback, Aaron Feeney Whipple.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointments and reappointments to the Cultural Arts Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. I don't know if anyone's in the audience or not. If they are, please stand and be recognized. Thank you.
Too smart.
Yes. Agenda number six, special presentations, Police Accountability Board Annual Update. Mr. Lambek, Mr. Ryan, please come forward. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for, as you put it, hitching up your snow dogs and sled dogs and coming out tonight.
You tell them everything I've told them.
Whenever you're ready.
The Police Accountability Board has been in existence now for just over a year and a half. We started July '22 in Aberdeen with our first meeting. And at that meeting, I made the comment because really nobody had given us much direction about what it was about. And I said, we're kind of building the airplane while we're flying it. And today, the airplane hasn't crashed yet. We are actually, I think, in Hartford County functioning pretty well, pretty effectively. One of the things that the Police Accountability Board does, as it turns out, and I was totally unaware of that when I accepted the appointment I did, the Police Accountability Board appoints two members to the charging committee, the Administrative Charging Committee, which is actually the agency that reviews and makes decisions about police wrongdoing, alleged wrongdoing. And then the third member from the Police Accountability Board is the chair themselves or the chairs designated. And I would, of course, not let somebody else take that responsibility, so I undertook that myself. The other two members of the charging committee are appointed by the executive. The Police Accountability Board has met quarterly. We've been meeting at the Amos Center, being a known facility and convenient to most people. The purpose of the meetings is to allow public comment, concerns, issues that the public might have about policing generally in the county. And we've had, actually, pretty minimal, I would say, public comments, public attendance. We've had a number of people who have attended, who are, have interests in law enforcement, but not really from the public viewpoint. All of the police agencies attend these meetings, the four that we have responsibility towards. And interestingly, when we first came together, we were under the impression that we had all of the law enforcement in Hartford County, which would include state police. And we don't, because the legislation is very clear that all the state agencies, state policing agencies, are under the state PAB and the State Administrative Charging Committee. So we have the Sheriff's Department, Aberdeen, Harvard of Grace, and Valer police departments. Discussions that we've had generally about policing in Hartford County go towards the purpose and the idea of the Accountability Board as we review the legislation and among our, discussion among ourselves is, what can we do to enhance law enforcement in Hartford County? And I started off, a year and a half ago, making the comment that, in my humble opinion and observing it for how many years, a long time, Hartford County is very, I think, fortunate to have excellent law enforcement across the board. Certainly, the Sheriff's Department, the municipalities. We have very excellent law enforcement in Hartford County. We've had, interestingly, virtually no public concerns expressed in any of these meetings that we've had. Some people had some questions, perhaps, about methodology, mainly what we were doing, that type of thing, but very little, no comments, complaints, as it were, about law enforcement issues in Hartford County. Under the Police Accountability Board, the ACC has been functioning since this time last year. The Administrative Charging Committee members undertook their 40 hours training the end of November, 1st of December last year, and began functioning the first week in January last year. We have had, I say "we" because I'm on the charging committee, we have handled 38, I believe, cases, 35 cases in Hartford County. And it's interesting to note that of the cases we've handled, better than 50% of them, we've returned as unfounded, which means we found that there were no evidence, was no evidence, of wrongdoing on the part of whatever agency officer it was, whatever police officer it was. The types of cases that are coming before the charging committee mostly involve, I hate to use the word minor offenses, because there's no such thing when you're dealing with a police officer, but they're not offenses that would cause one to be concerned about the well-being of the citizens of the jurisdiction. A police officer, some of them deal with discourteousness. A police officer, perhaps, making a comment that's improper, or a lot of them, a number of them are body camera violations. Officer forgets to turn on the body camera when they make a stop. Those complaints, interestingly enough, aren't coming from citizens, they're coming from the agencies. And probably of the 30-some cases we've had, the bulk of them have come from the agencies themselves, not from citizen complaints. And I think that's a very telling statistic. We have had, I'll make sure I get this right, we've had five cases, four cases, that resulted in the agency recommendation being termination, and the charging committee basically agreed with those determinations. Two of those, the officer had resigned before we ever got the case. The other two resulted in the officers electing to have, which they still have under the state statute, trial boards. One of those is still pending, actually, the end of this month. And the other one, the other one was resolved by, basically, the attorney for the city and the attorney for the officer having a plea agreement, which they submitted to the trial board judge. And the reason I'm looking at counsel kind of funny is that there's no provision anywhere in the statute for that to happen. And we think perhaps that shouldn't have happened, but we're not in a position to really challenge that, to make any to do about that. So that's where we are. We've had one change on the board. One of our members moved to Baltimore County and resigned, and you graciously appointed this young man to my right to join us, and we're very pleased to have Joe with us. A great addition to our board. Open for questions, comments, whatever.
So, thank you for that update, and I just want to recognize that we have Sheriff Gaylor in the audience with us this evening, and I am going to open the floor up for him if he has anything that he would like to add. But just for our citizens that are listening, if you could bring everybody up to speed again, the Police Accountability Board is with us because we no longer have our law enforcement bill of rights, correct?
The State of Maryland decided about three years ago, and I promised my wife not to be snarky tonight. The State of Maryland decided, for a number of reasons, that the long-existing methodology for dealing with police wrongdoing was not sufficient. And they decided that they would abolish the Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights, which had been in existence for 50 years? Yeah, near about. And established a twofold process, the Police Accountability Board and the charging committees, and that those two vehicles would then be the methodology by which the state would deal with police wrongdoing in the various jurisdictions. And as often is the case, the state passed the legislation with mandates, but with no fiscal attachments. So they basically left it up to the individual counties to establish the Police Accountability Boards however they wished, and the charging committees however they wished. Some counties have, we have five and five on our board and our charging committee, some have more. I think a couple have three on the Police Accountability Board. I made the statement early on that we felt, I felt, and I think most people on the Police Accountability Board agree with me, that we've been blessed with excellent police activities in Hartford County, on the Sheriff's Department and three municipalities. We had a meeting in October with, in Annapolis, Enron County, with the, all of the Police Accountability Boards statewide were invited, and we had probably half of the counties represented. And it was interesting to see, across that meeting, what was going on. We, at that point in time, had had 25, I think, cases before us. Baltimore County had had two. Prince George's County, which has multi-seven-figure budget, has not only 15 or so people on the charging committee, they have two investigators that work for the charging committee, and they go back behind the agency's investigation and conduct their own integrity investigations. And they have, in the neighborhood, this is October, they had in the neighborhood of that time about 3,200 cases in the pipeline. I had, I considered privilege during our training session here in Hartford County of sitting next to Kurt Schmuck, Kurt Schmuck, whom I think most of you know, chancellor at University of Baltimore. Was asked by one of his friends to serve on the charging committee, and midway through it, he turned to me and he said, wait a minute. I'm on the state, that means I have responsibility for all of the state police agencies? I said, yeah. And they have literally thousands of cases pending. So we are fortunate, 35 to me seems like a big number. It's less when you feel how many are not even founded to begin with. But Hartford County is dealing with the process, I think, in a very positive way. I think members of the Police Accountability Board are very dedicated at what they're doing, the members of the charging committee, who are, I don't think many people understand what's involved in that, and I don't want to get too much into the technical aspect of it, but if we have a case from the Sheriff's Department, let's say, that has three officers involved, there'd be three body cameras, there may be, they have a dozen witnesses. Those cases, to review them, take hours and hours and hours of time. The charging committee members are spending about 20 to 25 hours a week reviewing these things, starting last January through current time. The legislation, I don't think, is accomplishing what people thought it would initially. One of the complaints that I think we get from the police agencies is, the process now has become so cumbersome that issues that they would deal with internally are now taking months to resolve because of the investigation that has to go on and having the multiple layers of that investigation, and things they might have dealt with the chief and the officer, one-to-one. George, you screwed up. You need a day off. Yes, sir, I know I did. I'm sorry, I'm going to correct whatever I did, and they take care of it. Now, that results in an investigation that may take months. And while that investigation is going on, the officer is basically in limbo. If they are a specialized training officer, they can't do that, they can't do a lot of the things that they might need to be doing if they weren't handling this investigation. So we see some burdens there. The legislation had a lot of timing issues that were totally unreasonable, and we discussed that in our round robin in October. There's an effort being made to try to correct those. Not going to happen this session because apparently all the fiscal things that are going on in Annapolis now, everything else is kind of getting pushed to the side this year. But there are some timing things that are in the legislation that are just totally not practical, and, you know, deal with that as time progresses.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, you have anything to add, real quick?
Oh, no, sorry.
Before I open it up to questions, Sheriff, anything you want to add while you're here?
Do you want me to speak from back here?
Come up front, if you don't mind, please. They all are.
Mr. President, Chair.
That young man just gave it up.
Good evening, and thank you. I doubt in many jurisdictions you're going to see the chief of police for the county or the sheriff sitting next to the chair of the PAB complimenting one another. And I have to say, I do think, although the legislation that formed the Police Accountability Board and the Administrative Charging Committee, as you heard from Mr. Lambek, is very flawed and is proving to be more difficult than the Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights ever was, as far as trying to hold police officers accountable in today's world. And then, as you heard from Mr. Lambek, in many jurisdictions, these cases are backed up, and they're not going to meet the timelines that are established in legislation. I see many of these, I predict this is all going to end up in the courts. None of this process has been, you know, vetted through the court system, and you may see hundreds and hundreds of police officers across this state cleared from any kind of accountability by this process that they have established. Again, it's a seriously flawed prospect, project that they came up with, idea, concept that they came up with in Annapolis. With what we have, and Mr. Lambek gave the example of flying, building the plane as you're flying it, I would say they gave you, you know, the pilot's chair and not even an engine to get up in the air with. We have made a workable system here in Hartford County, and that's due to the quality of Mr. Lambek as the chair of the Police Accountability Board and the members on the Police Accountability Board, and Mr. Ryan is a great addition to that, and the members, Dr. Kirkland and the members of the Administrative Charging Committee. Again, the frustration comes in. We've had some police officers, deputies, police officers in the county who've been able to escape accountability, if, for lack of a better word, the process under the old system, where we would have been able to hold them accountable for what majority or minor violations of policy or minor misconduct, who completely escaped any kind of accountability because of the new process. So we are working to figure it out, as with legislative sessions started. I have great concerns, anytime Annapolis opens a door to fix something, they break it worse. And this hasn't even started operating. And again, we're early on in this. We are finding ways to make it work. Here in Hartford County, again, because of the open door, I think, the communications, the quality of the officers and the deputies that we hire here are better, don't want to demean any other police departments, but, you know, I think we do a great job with that, as do the municipalities here. So thankfully, we don't have a ton of cases, but John gave the example of two in Baltimore County. They're not sending cases. I mean, it's impossible. That's a 30,000-member agency or something like that. They're not following the rules. There's no other explanation, other than they are not following the new law, even trying to. For us to be the size we are, with 300 law enforcement, each town running 30 to 40 officers, and we're at 35 cases, you know that there's an effort here, as there was before House Bill 670 threw a wrench into the works, to hold people accountable. And my frustration comes through, my wife didn't make me commit to not being, that the legislation just doesn't work. But again, due to the quality of the members of the PAB and our ACC, and again, the chief's willingness, our willingness, the sheriff's office to make it work, we are making a bad system work. But I do think some of these things are going to end up in the court system, and again, more and more police officers around the state are not going to be held accountable when they need to be, which is wrong, and more importantly, they're not going to be separated for serious misconduct when it's necessary for the citizens. It's going to have the opposite effect of what this whole legislation was meant to be. We're going to do our best with it here, and again, great, great people that have been appointed here and that we work with, and hopefully we'll find a way to continue to make the system work.
Outstanding.
But I'll take any questions along with.
Yeah, just sit.
Checks in the mail?
Checks in the mail.
Just sit tight, Sheriff. Counsel, Member Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judge Lambek, Mr. Ryan, I want to thank you. You guys have been tasked with an impossible mission, and we're able to salvage that to a manageable, proficient, competent board. So I just want to just convey my appreciation, if you can convey that to your team as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie.
I just have a question. You're talking about that you had hardly any complaints from any citizens about the cameras, that you had a complaint from what group, what? You said the biggest complaints you got from the camera situation was from what area? What group?
The agencies themselves.
Right, the agency.
Are, will make those complaint. The agency can make a complaint against their officer and bring it to us.
But you had very few from the citizens, right?
Not that kind of thing.
Well, what I would wonder, then, my question would be, how would the citizen know?
With those, most of the time, they would not. That's why they're coming from the agency themselves. The citizen complaints we get would be things like, just for an example, sheriff's office responds to Joffrey Town for an emergency commitment order. The subject demands to see the supervisor. I want to see the supervisor. Well, the sergeant, who happened to be the supervisor, was on the scene, that was the supervisor, that individual filed a complaint. They didn't let me see the supervisor. That's the kind of complaint that might be coming from a citizen versus from the agency itself. If...
If the sheriffs... If one of the sheriff supervisors sees someone doing something improper during their shift, they can charge that officer, and that complaint will come eventually to us.
But there's no way for if Aaron's here arresting somebody, and whether he turns his camera on or not, there's no way for the citizens to know, right? You know what? Maybe a suggestion, there ought to be a little blinking light on it, and that tells a citizen, there's a light?
Well, I can tell you, speaking from a law enforcement stance, the last thing I want in the middle of the night is a light showing my location. So, there is a light on them, and it tells the officer. I can tell you, we look at it as a training issue, even though we're now a year and a half into having cameras in high-stress events. You have to remember to hit the button. We still have notes all over headquarters in the precincts reminding our deputies, you know, turn it on, activate it when you go out, turn it off when you go into the bathroom, those kind of things. But the body cameras have proven... The problem isn't them not activating them. The great thing about them is they have exonerated, not just unfounded, but completely exonerated accusations against our law enforcement and other law enforcement officers by simply pressing play and watching what really happened. And as Mr. Lambek was saying, many of the complaints that we have investigated and the Charging Committee gets those to review, along with all the camera footage, just show how nonsensical so many of the complaints against the men and women of law enforcement are.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Riley?
Yes, first off, again, one of the things that you've got to realize in a high-stress situation, the last thing you want to think about is pressing some button. So, Sheriff, I appreciate what your folks do. And Judge Lambek, I want to thank you for your service on the bench, and the fact that you're serving our community still after that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Bennett?
Oh, thank you for being here tonight. Just a few quick questions about the statistical information in the summary report. Am I understanding correctly of the thirty-two cases from last year or from 2023, zero were filed against an officer from Bel Air or Havering Grace?
That's correct.
Do you have... Is that just that they're doing an especially good job there? Or what do you think would cause zero to come from Bel Air and Havering Grace?
Counselman, I am not able to answer that question.
I'd be willing to speculate.
I can't speculate.
I can speculate. This process is so confusing that many chiefs, particularly in smaller agencies, don't have an idea of what has to go and what doesn't have to go. And we went from having one uniform process across the state in the Law Enforcement Officers' Bill of Rights that every policing agency did the same. Hundred-and-sixty-some policing agencies had to do the same step and processes to a hundred-and-sixty-seven individual processes. So, I can tell you, one of the chiefs, and I won't say which one, at the last PAB, Police Accountability Board meeting, had spoke about that these certain cases didn't need to go to the Charging Committee. That's not the case. The law says anytime there's police discipline, the Charging Committee has to see it, and it has to be in accordance with the state matrix. Doesn't matter where it starts, whether it involves a member of the public. So, what you have is, and here in Hartford County too, we have an established uniformity across the four policing agencies, and there's certainly not uniformity across the hundred-and-sixty-some in the state of Maryland.
Very accurate. Actual, yeah.
One other statistical question and then procedural question, because I'm just trying to understand how all this works. It's so new. In the... There's, you know, three categories for what happened at the end of a case. Either they were administratively charged, they were not charged, or it was unfounded. What's the difference between not charged and unfounded?
Oh, I wish I could give you an answer to that. Again, we don't really know because there is no definition in the statute telling us what that should be. And that's one of the problems that the agencies have, is do I charge this officer with this or not? I can't give you a good answer for that. There is a...
And we have different findings that we're going to come up with when we do the investigation, and these exist from the previous, which are going to be unfounded, didn't happen. What was accused simply was disproven by body camera, but irrefutable, did not happen. Non-sustained, meaning there was more evidence that it didn't happen than it did, and the officer's not going to be facing any sanction, but non-sustained doesn't mean it didn't happen. Something happened, it just wasn't enough to prove that the officer did any wrong.
Doesn't reach the level of the wrongdoing that requires punishment.
Or sustained, meaning we found enough evidence in order to go to the next step and impose some sort of discipline. When it gets to the Charging Committee, then, under the three things you have, is not charged, and I could see that as being something like not activating the body camera, and the Charging Committee saying discipline isn't appropriate here. However, we would ask for some retraining, something like that.
That's a great answer to my question. And just the last question procedurally, if a citizen wanted to file a case, is it one uniform place that they would do that, like one website? Or is there a different link for different agencies in the county? How's that work?
Site would be the county website, or a citizen can file directly with the agency. They can go to Aberdeen, Havering Gray Sheriff's Department, Bel Air. They can go walk into the department, and there's a process for them to file right there.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Riley?
I'm sorry, I failed to say congratulations, Joe. And also, I want to thank you for the service for the state and also the county. And now, again, another volunteer out there in the community, and Joe, we thank you for your service.
Let me make one comment. Since the sheriff's here, this is not because he's here. It's interesting that, talking about the Charging Committee, when an agency submits a case to us, they are able to submit recommendations for disposition for punishment, and the agency punishment recommendations can be ignored by the ACC, or they can impose whatever they feel is appropriate. We all operate under this statute. There's something called the punishment matrix. Historically, if the sheriff had a... Aaron came in and did something stupid, and the sheriff brings him in and says, "Aaron, you did this stupid thing, and we needed to address it," yada, yada. Under this new statute, everything has... Every infraction has a specific penalty that goes with it. And we are mandated to follow that matrix. We don't have the ability to say, "This is a once-in-a-career thing, and, you know, go forth and send no more." They can't do that anymore. It's taken away the agency's ability to deal with certain infractions on a case-by-case basis. And I think that's problematic with all the agencies now in the state dealing with that.
Unless the Charging Committee decided to not charge. If they do charge, then they have to go to the statewide matrix supposedly for uniform.
Correct. We had... Not talking about specifics, because I can't do that. One case where the infraction, the matrix required, based on the infraction, required termination, okay? The Charging Committee, every single one of us, were having gut-wrenching issues about not doing that because of the circumstances with this particular case. We were not able to do anything other than recommend termination.
That was not one of our cases. That was not one of our cases. No, no, no.
Mr. Janjordan?
Thanks, Judge. Thanks, Sheriff. Thanks, Joe. Thank you for your service. So, going back to that scenario, and you're following the matrix, do they get legal representation? And do they get to dispute that?
Yes.
Okay.
They still have the right under the new statute. They still have the right to have the trial board. If they disagree with the recommendation of... The Charging Committee sends it back to the agency with their recommendation. The agency can increase, but not decrease, the recommendation of the Charging Committee. So, if we recommend termination, nothing they can do with it. They...
But that can be... Can that be overthrown, though, if it goes back to...
The officer could ask for trial board, which they've done, and trial board may determine... Yeah, they're not going to get fired.
We have yet to have a trial board here in Hartford County, and I'm not sure. Have they had any in the state?
Nothing I'm aware of. We've got one pending now, the end of this month, in Aberdeen.
It's been postponed. Joe?
It's been postponed full time. Why would I think it's going to go forward? Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm getting snarky.
And just because Mr. Lambek just made me think about it, again, as she said, the process is very specific in that the agency investigates. Our findings go to the Charging Committee. The Charging Committee reviews. If they find, then they can impose punishment in accordance with the matrix. And then you have the trial board, and then if you... If the officer's found guilty at a trial board, they can, of course, and they want to appeal it, they can appeal it to Circuit Court. Nowhere in there is there any provision for the negotiation, as you gave an example in one case that was done, and that was not with our agency. That is not provided for in law, was in the old process. So, again, I think many of these things, police departments are trying to find a way to make them work, making an unworkable system work, and they're going to find these things in court and be on the... The jurisdictions, I feel, will be on the losing end of these things with officers who should have been held accountable for something winning, based on how bad the legislation is.
Sheriff, if you had to terminate somebody because of the matrix and all that, can you hire him back?
No. Can we hire him? Well, I wouldn't hire him back.
Well, but if that... If what he was saying before, that they don't agree with the matrix and everything, and somebody was terminated because of that, but their recommendation was really, he shouldn't have been terminated, but he's got to be terminated, does that preclude them from being hired back somewhere else?
Yeah, it's supposed to. But this should have existed. This existed before House Bill 670, in that the commission has to certify a police officer or correctional deputy in the state. So, the commission, if you got terminated from one agency, you would have had to go to the commission and ask for a waiver in order for another police department to hire that person. What I believe this legislation has done, and we've seen it at the sheriff's office, is allow people who know they're going to get in trouble for something to leave. Once they leave, they are no longer resigned. They're no longer under the jurisdiction of the PAB, the ACC, or the agency, and they can get picked up somewhere else. And that investigation just sits there in limbo because these things, whatever the number was, in Prince George's County, and Baltimore has hundreds and hundreds of cases waiting, these officers are just trying to go somewhere else before their accountability comes down. So, what it was meant to prevent, I think it has actually aggravated, which is bad cops moving from one agency to another.
Can you search if there's an existing case? So, if like you went to go hire somebody, they left BG County, came up here, do you search? And are they... And you can find if there's a pending case.
Absolutely. We just reposted again for laterals. And so, if we have people apply, in fact, we had six apply overnight, which we opened it yesterday. They're all from Baltimore City, so part of that process would be going down and looking at their Internal Affairs file. I can tell you, I can promise you, because of how competitive it is now for men and women, sheriff's office has not changed our hiring standards, but there are some police officers being hired around the state to police departments that have no business in this profession.
I want to echo my colleague's comments, their appreciation for what you guys do. We appreciate it. When this came to the county council, when the Police Accountability Board came to the county council, Mr. Kearney and I had many discussions, and we are so appreciative of the fact that you all had stepped up to serve on that board. My question to you is now, do you have the tools that you need to move forward? Is there something that the council can advocate for, for the PAB?
Not for the PAB? Well, we... I understand from Charlie Robbins of the county has advertised for an admin person for both the PAB and the ACC a couple of weeks ago Friday.
So, to this point, you're okay?
Not really. Hasn't... The person hasn't been hired.
Okay.
And once hired, the question's going to be if they're going to be able to actually do the job that we need to have done, more so for the Charging Committee than the PAB.
Okay.
And you've been very generous in lending us, Ms. Harris, to take care of the PAB admin duties fairly. Thank you so much for that. Thank you, Ms. Harris, for that. The reports that are done by the Charging Committee are very complex. They're lengthy, they're complex, they're technical.
But they don't fall under the county council, correct?
That's the problem. They don't fall under your purview. And so, when you ask that question...
Yes.
PAB, probably not really.
Well, if there's something that we can advocate for you in need for the Charging Committee, I would say, let us know.
Okay.
We want to continue to be great partners and trying to, you know, navigate through this system, assist you in any way that we can. Counsel, is there anyone else with any other questions or comments? Sheriff, we appreciate you being here this evening.
And I will just, before I get up in the chair, just echo again. I think Mr. Lambek, Dr. Kirkland on the ACC, and all of our members, or our PAB and ACC, are great people who signed up to do a different job, really an impossible task.
And had no idea...
Right.
...what was going to be asked of them.
But they have, you know, they have made a process that is working, even though it's not ever going to work without a lot of tweaking.
Well, we appreciate you, and thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Agenda number seven, approval of minutes, legislative date 24-001, January 2, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item numbers eight, nine, and 10, we have no business this evening. Eleven, call for final reading of bills. Bill 23-034, distribution hotel occupancy tax revenue as amended, may I have a motion?
Counsel President, I move to approve Bill 23-034 as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pembent. It's been moved in a second to... Second to approve Bill 23-034 as amended. Is there any discussion? Mr. Riley?
Yes, I would just like to echo for District D, we have some consideration about this particular bill, and we will be revisiting it in the future. And I appreciate those folks that might want to revisit it. Twenty-five percent for just District A doesn't sit well with me, and so, I will be voting no for this, but hopefully, in the future, we can rectify it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
Well, that's surprising that he's complaining about District A. His district doesn't raise a single penny because he doesn't have any hotels, you know? And I sympathize with that, but he don't have any hotels. I have nine hotels, raises $685,000 a year. And wouldn't you think that District A would be entitled to something out of that $685,000? And that's how the bill started. It started off with 50% because that's what District E and District F get. They get 50% of the hotel tax for their municipality. I don't have a municipality, so it's out of the district. And though I still don't get it, even at the 50%, which was in there before it got amended down to 25, which, by the way, at our community meeting last Monday, which we get some pretty good attendance, Medwood and Joppa Town, there was forty, fifty people there at the meeting, very upset over what the council did with those four amendments, passing those four amendments, which those four amendments only affected District A, didn't affect anybody else. Any of those amendments would have passed, wouldn't affect another district. The money's there. You take a look at the audit. The audit's there. The tax increase from 22 to 23, almost $300,000. District A, if they were going to get one half, it would be about 330, and they ain't getting it still. It isn't like District E or F. They get one half, and it goes directly into the municipality, and the mayor and the city council can spend it. and the mayor and the city council can spend it, any damn place they please, and that's their right, and I'm, I'm all for it. But even the bill passed on its face, and half, half of the six hundred and eighty-five thousand, somewhere around three hundred and forty, and District twenty-four, it's figured to be about three hundred and eighteen, there was this need to cut that in half, which I thought was ridiculous. The people at the, at our meeting Monday night, they want to bring a class action suit against this council and against the county, if in fact the bill were to pass, because they feel like they're being discriminated against, that why should their district be cut to twenty-five percent when everybody else is cut fifty percent? And on top of that, District F gets the biggest bang out of this bill than the other five districts combined. Because District F gets, not only do they get the fifty percent from the, from the hotels that are in the municipality, they now get, on this bill, get another twenty-five percent from, would have been fifty under my bill, but twenty-five percent under the amendments, from all the other hotels outside of that municipality, but in District F, which means that it would have given District F, under the fifty percent, almost another half a million dollars on top of their fifty-two thousand. That's a hell of a jump. I guess maybe somebody has trouble with mathematics, I don't know. But anyway, that's my, that's my issue, and, and it's disappointing that it, it doesn't look like my bill at all anymore with, with those amendments, those four amendments that, and, and by the way, that those four amendments, when they got to District F, they were tied three to three, and he was deciding vote on all four of those amendments. So, that, that, for somebody who's supposed to get the biggest bang out of a buck, surprising that he'd vote for, against all four of those amendments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else make comments? Mr. Riley?
Yes, just to let you know that for my colleague from District A, I understand he's collecting the tax, but in the last eight years, there's no destination in District A. He's collecting the tax from the destinations from all the rest of our districts.
And if I may not interrupt you, he's not collecting the tax. The hotels in the district are.
I understand.
It's not his money.
I'm talking about District A. You understand what I was saying, Mr. President?
Yes, yes, just clarification, that's all.
From District A. If it was a clean bill, and all of it went to Visit Hartford, I'd be a hundred percent behind it. But the problem is, is now he wants to be the collector and also the receiver of the tax when the rest of us are at least in B, C, and D, we're not getting any of that tax. So, that's why I'm a hundred percent against it. I have the, the Stepping Stone Museum, which is next to District F. I also have the, the Gardens, Liddoo Gardens, who has about three thousand members. Both of them contacted me, said, Jim, if he's getting a portion of it, wow, not getting a portion of it. So, again, I think it should go all to Visit Hartford, to Eric and Jay, but now we're starting to deparse it out, so I'm totally against it, only because he's the collector, not a destination. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Guthrie?
I hate this going back and forth, but Jim doesn't know what he's talking about. This, I'm not the collector, okay? The, the nine hotels that are in District A pay a hotel tax, they don't pay it. They, 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 they get it from the people who stay in the beds at seven percent for, excuse me, six percent. And that totals six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That's six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the last nine years. Nine years, Big Jim, has come to the county and been in those coffers in the county. The county for the last nine years has decided where that six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is going. My bill passes just the way it is, I don't get it, District A don't get it. It gives us an option to go to the county executive and ask him for that three hundred and forty thousand dollars to be spent, which is one half of the hotel tax, raised in District A. Why is that so hard for Big Jim to realize?
Mr. Guthrie, Mr. Guthrie, it's councilmen.
I'm sorry, I'll calm down, but it, it just, it just beturbs me because I don't know where Jim was and, and other council members been for the last nine years. Why weren't you complaining for the last nine years that, where all this money is going in District E and F? You know, and, and the district, you weren't complaining because District A was giving you five and a half million dollars in the last nine years, and not one single penny of that five and a half million dollars is spent in District A. It's the first time we're trying to get some money spent in the area where, that, where the, the, the hotels and stuff are really going to expand because of, of the, the big sports complex that's coming in there that's, that's, they're already playing games there, and they expect to be going full bore, you know, in Compromine, in, in early spring. They go full bore, according to the CEO of that operation, they expect twelve thousand people, twelve thousand people in any given weekend to come into District A, into Edgewood, into that sports complex to play games, and they got eight different fields there now. I was over there just a couple of nights ago, and they're already playing games. I, I couldn't believe it. The lights were on, it was at night, it was cold, but there was three teams out there on three different fields already playing games. There must have been two hundred cars in the parking lot, and, and they haven't even started yet. So, it, it's nothing that I can get or District A can get. It, it is a number, whether the number's two hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, or six hundred thousand, it doesn't matter. We still, in District A, have to do something District E and F do not have to do. They get their money, goes right into the, to, to the municipality, the mayor and the city council decides where it goes, and it goes anywhere they want. Doesn't have to go in tourism, on top of that. Mine is, it's got words in it, I got to put it in tourism, which I have no problem, because that's what it's supposed to be. I have to go, and my people have to go, and we have to apply to the county executive, whether you like it or not, the deciding person, not the committee, the committee makes a recommendation to the county executive. The county executive has got all the veto power, he's going to decide where that money is going to go. I can ask for three hundred thousand to go into this, or this project, or that project, doesn't mean he's got to give it to me. It just, it's just, it's just possible, but I still got to go get it. So, I don't know where everybody's been for the last nine years, but that's, that's over five, five and a half million dollars that's come out of our district and not a penny spent in it. So, I, I would have a little sympathy for the people in District A instead of their turnarounds and threatening to sue the county.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, thank you. Mr. Janjordano?
Thank you, Council President. So, I, I want to give you a little background on Visit Hartford and their support of District A events and some of the things that they have sponsored in the past couple of years, and if you just bear with me, because I just lost, but, okay. So, in Hartford County Spring Nationals, May thirteenth to fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three sponsorship, Hartford, that was, that was first one, Spring Nationals. Hartford Stream sponsor, twenty, twenty twenty to two thousand and twenty-three, Flying Point Park was one of the locations. The Bass Master, July twenty-sixth to two thousand and eighteen, now that was canceled due to weather. Forty-five thousand dollars was spent promoting that, so we need, we need some more events like that. The FWL Fishing League Worldwide sponsor, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, Flying Point Park Marina, featured college and high school anglers from all over the country. Hartford Civil Rights Project, promoting local artists in the Edgewood-Jopptown area. Edgewood mural diversity, beautiful experiential trails, mural trail. Ice Cream Trail, Sam Snowballs, promoting Sam Snowballs, promoting the different businesses. Venetian Eatery, promotion of restaurants in Hartford County Restaurant Week, and now working with Compromine as they're coming on. So, Bass Master was, like I said, that was forty-five thousand, and then the FWL League was three thousand for both years. So, there is nine hotels in Edgewood. Bel Air doesn't have any hotels, nor does Fallston, nor does Councilman Riley's area, but Bel Air has the Arts Festival that brings twenty to thirty thousand people. First year had the Italian Festival, brought twenty-five thousand people. Has the Lyra Dedrum, has Rockfield, that they have weddings almost every weekend, has the Wine Festival, okay? Hartford Mutual has no place for people to stay in Bel Air, they have to stay in hotels. They're staying in hotels, and Aberdeen, they're driving into Bel Air. So, Bel Air drives a lot of the economic, other than just the people that are staying, that are coming up and down ninety-five, whether they stay in Edgewood, Bell Camp, or Aberdeen, those hotels right off of ninety-five. Anything other than that, the sports tourism is, is Cedar Lane, that is also Bel Air. So, District D has Pond View Farm, that's a wedding, also has the, the new wedding venue out there in, can't think, what's the name?
Pignan Farm?
Yeah, Vignor Farms, and people are staying, they have weddings all during the week because other ethnic groups have weddings during the week, they are booked there all the time. So, even though these hotels are located not in, in our areas, we're drawing a lot of the people to come, to stay in the hotels, to come to events, you know. I, I know for a fact, the Bel Air Italian Festival, three days, we had over a hundred rooms booked, all three days minimum at one hotel. So, you know, that's all I've got to say. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Council President, and just, you know, I've said it before, but just to repeat it for the record, about one point one million dollars is generated in District F with the hotel tax, but only a hundred thousand of that is generated within the municipality of Havdegrace. You know, District F is a lot bigger than Havdegrace, so when you think about one point one million dollars being generated in District F, not fifty percent of that one point one million is, is guaranteed for District F. Fifty-four thousand is guaranteed for the city of Havdegrace. And then Bell Camp, which is the driving force behind the rest of that money, goes through, you know, that whole, everybody goes through the same process the rest of the county goes through to receive tourism funding. So, I just wanted to be clear about that. The city of Havdegrace generates about a hundred thousand dollars a year in hotel tax revenue, and they get fifty percent of what's generated within the municipality. The rest of District F, which is a lot bigger than Havdegrace, you know, it's Bell Camp, Abingdon, Perryman, Aberdeen Proving Ground, Creswell, so on and so on. It, it generates the other, a little over a million dollars a year. So, you know, District F and Havdegrace are not the same, same thing, and I just wanted to be very clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie?
Just to close out, but in District F, this bill, besides the, the fifty percent that they get into the Havdegrace municipality, this bill lets District F go out to the entire district, and he can get twenty-five percent, that was fifty, they, they amended it to twenty-five, he still will be able to go after that kind of money, just like I'll be able to go out after it in my district, he will have that same right. And instead of fifty-two thousand, it could be up towards the four or five hundred thousand.
Done. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Riley?
Okay, and closing out, hopefully, just to let you know, in the last nine years, District A, applying for this tax, has only applied for five thousand dollars. Self-initiated from District A was five thousand dollars for a parade. I don't know many, how many heads and beds that put, but the bottom line is, they only went for five thousand dollars. And so, here we got councilmen from District A that's complaining he's not getting enough of the money, but again, they're not applying for the money, and now he wants to set aside twenty-five percent. So, again, if it was going all to Visit Hartford, that was self-initiated, all the money you saw that went, I'd be a hundred percent for it, but I'm voting no on this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, and if I may, I'd like to have the last word on this. As you can all hear, there's a tremendous amount of passion that is thrown out through this entire hotel tax legislation. But we've not lost sight of the importance of tourism in Hartford County, and the millions and millions of dollars it means to our businesses here. So, there's no doubt in my mind, a, a version of this bill will come back very shortly, and we will take another look at it, and I, I welcome that because we're hoping that more tax dollars will be, you know, built in this county through all of these efforts, whether it be Compromine, or Visit Hartford, or whoever. It's important, it's imperative that we continue to increase the tourism activities in the county. And if the revenue is generated as we say, then I think it's appropriate for us to come back and take a look at this again. But for tonight, I believe we're done talking about this. So, Ms. Dixon, call the roll.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Mrs. Bill Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
It's not my bill anymore, abstain.
There are five votes in the affirmative, one in the negative, one abstention. Bill twenty-three dash zero thirty-four as amended is hereby approved. Agenda twelve, enrollment of bills, Bill twenty-three dash zero thirty-four, distribution hotel occupancy tax revenue as amended is certified as being the text finally passed. Agenda items thirteen and fourteen, we have no business this evening. Seventeen comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up, Mr. President.
Thank you. Agenda number sixteen, business from council members. Mr. Guthrie, may I start with you?
Surely. Said enough about the hotel tax, that's enough. Last week, Wednesday, I went to the Pyramid Healthcare Center, which is now the new center on, right on the corner of Route forty and one fifty-two. You know where that lake's there, that's in front of that, used to be a motel, it's now taken over by the Pyramid Healthcare, and they provide rehab rooms for people who are coming off drugs and other problems. And also, it's also a homeless shelter for different people, and they've done an outstanding job there fixing that place up. And they invited me over last week to tour another building that they just rehabbed, and it's a twenty-two room facility for homeless women. And they already have enough people on the wedding list to take over that entire building. So, we're just trying to get the, all the other, all the permits and everything in place for them to be able to open up for, for the homeless women in the area. So, we appreciate the effort they're doing over there, because it's a, it's, it's a beautiful place, and they really, it's really, I mean, you could hit off the floors, it's so clean over there. Also, last Friday, I had the opportunity along with Tony, by the way, we went to Abingdon Library, he was there before I was, it's book reading day, to read the books, read a book for the children. And Tony got there before me, and he, he had this hairdresser on, hairdresser wig on.
Don't steal my thunder.
And I let, I let him expand on it, but I, I got, I got a picture, and I stuck it on Facebook for everybody to see it, because it was so cool. Anyway, it was a good experience, I like doing that, it's very enjoyable to, to read for the kid. With that, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things, I want to touch on some of the things that were spoken about at the State of the County address. The county executive mentioned a five percent growth, and I'd like to just find out more about that and how that five percent is being calculated, whether it's total revenue, income tax, or just a total one point two billion dollar budget, because those differences are large and would influence that. I did feel the county address lacked the accomplishments by this current administration. I think a lot of the accomplishments that were discussed were from the previous Glassman administration. I know they did take credit for the Italian Festival, and that credit should go to Saab. Perhaps they should have took credit for the balloon festival that ended up in Pennsylvania, that really impacted tourism. that really impacted tourism as well, on a negative tone. The county executive did mention careful steward of tax dollars, and the government must live up to the same means. I'm not sure the Cassley administration follows those same guidelines, because an audit would reveal that the new administration has grown employees by 208 positions, which is essentially big government. While some of those positions are warranted, many of them were not, not to mention the numerous contract employees that have been hired as advisory roles. He did mention the accomplishment of the new cameras on the Mall and Paul Trail. What I find troubling is the installation of those cameras and the manner of how they were approved. Just like the funds that were used to begin the EMS program being allocated improperly, once again, the county administration did not follow the proper guidelines or the rules and the procedure, and I'll give you a timeline on that. On August 15th, news article confirms the county executive has asked the staff to start budgeting and procurement for cameras along the trail. On November 21st, ICT requested the contract be presented at the next Board of Estimates meeting. On November 27th, the groundbreaking event for the camera system takes place, and a press release was issued on November 29th. And then December 5th, the Board of Estimates approval finally came in for those cameras. So, they started the cameras before it was even approved by the Board of Estimates. So, one year into this administration, the same intolerable mistakes continue to occur. On other notes, I attended a traffic safety advisory meeting this last week and discussed the new school bus camera program. Alarmingly, in the year 2023, 4,828 confirmed violations of running through school bus stops occurred, far worse than people actually realized were taking place. I think they are assessing a $250 fine, so we'll kind of figure out where those funds are going as well. Tomorrow, the MAKO meetings begin, that myself and legislative aide Lauren McDougall will attend. In addition to the general MAKO meetings, I was placed on the Land Use Subcommittee. In all tomorrow, here's a packet, there's about 50 pieces of legislation that we'll be reviewing. Just in discussion, I think some people have saw a premature press release by the county sent today in reference to a particular piece of legislation. I think it's more fear mongering. I have been in constant discussions with my colleagues and different stakeholders regarding some aspects of the legislation, and I truly look forward to hearing from the community during public hearing, during, for public comment, I should say, for positive and negative effects on that legislation. And finally, on a positive note, saving the best for last, I want to wish my legislative aide Lauren McDougall a happy birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday, Lauren, and thank you for all you do. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Janjordano?
Thank you, Council President. So, I did attend the Sixth Annual Fairy Tale and Superhero Reading Event Friday at the library. I know Council President was there, obviously Dion was there, I think Jacob was there, Jessica was there, and Aaron was there. And I did wear an orange wig, I read a book that I had from when I was a kid called Moptop. So, I had a big old bushy orange wig that I wore with a psychedelic shirt, and I had Mary Hassler come cut my hair, and some kids got all upset that she was cutting my hair, so she had to assure her that it was fine. And then I also posted a picture of my hair when I was 13 years old, graduating eighth grade, and it was also this big bushy, bushy thing. So, I loved that event, I love reading to the kids, it's an honor, it's a privilege to do that, so I really, really appreciate that. And as far as the Italian Festival goes, the administration spent countless hours meeting with us, and not just one or two people, we had 25 to 30 people in those meetings, month after month after month, from them building bocce courts, to them making sure that the stages were correct and everything. I mean, there was a constant, the sheriff's office was in there, you know, Major Gonzalez was there, I mean, it was just a monumental task. We had no idea how big the Italian Festival was going to be. Thankfully, it turned out beyond anybody's wildest dreams, we had 25,000 people there. But Terry Handley actually came out the one day before we were open, and was working with his crew, so that they can get all the roads paved, if they're not paved, but put straw down and everything, because we had a rain. So, I do have to say that the county was in 150% on that. Without them, we could not have had it done. They were, whatever we needed, they made it happen, we brought tons of people to the county, tons of people loved the event. We had some hiccups that we're, hopefully, we're going to fix next year, the lines were tremendous to get there, the food lines were too long, we're going to hopefully fix all that, but without the county stepping up and doing everything that they could, county executive was in 100%, we could not have had it done. And I'm proud that thankfully we had that help, because otherwise we wouldn't have got it done. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano, and Mr. Riley.
Do you want to say something about Caitlin before I do?
Please? Oh, well, you mean as far as my legislative aide, yeah. Unfortunately, my legislative aide is taking a job teaching history, and she's going to be leaving us at the end of this month. So, five years I've had Caitlin as my legislative aide. When I started, I didn't have a legislative aide for a month, and thankfully, somebody recommended Caitlin. Super organized, keeps me straight, I get a little frustrated here and there, but without all this paperwork here and budget cycles, but myself and my budget advisor, Eric Rebert, she's done a great job, I'm certainly going to miss her. I wish she was staying, but I'm happy for her, I hope it all works out, she'll be, I can look out my window and wave to Caitlin, because she'll be at Bel Air High School, and like I said, I hope I wish her well, and we'll have her for about another couple of days, and that's it.
And I also want to say thank you to Caitlin, not only for trying to keep Tony straight, because I can't imagine anybody trying to do that, but also wish her the best. I also believe reporting back to Ludue Gardens and Stepping Stone in reference to the vote tonight, I know there's about a couple hundred people that are waiting for that vote, so I appreciate everything that went on tonight, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Miss Sodles?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also attended the library annual fairy tale reading last week, I didn't wear a wig, but it was really fun, the kids enjoy it, we enjoy it, it's a positive atmosphere. We, last week, a couple of us also attended the Route 40 Business Luncheon, and we're able to hear Superintendent Bolson speak on where we are currently with Hartford County Public Schools, and what we will be looking at as budget season arises. And I'd like to thank all of our first responders for all the work they do every day, but especially last week, that storm on Tuesday, I'm grateful for all of them, and I believe that's all I have. Stay safe, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to echo what Councilwoman Boyle Sodles just shared, I know this past week has been really hard on all of our first responders, from the wind and the rain last week to the snow this week, and more snow coming on Friday, ice coming tonight, it's just been a lot. So, if you can stay off the roads, please do so. I think if it wasn't for the hotel tax bill, you know, we probably would have stayed off the roads ourselves tonight, most likely, but we had something that had to get done tonight. But, you know, it's very important that we keep each other safe, and then also, by staying off the roads, our first responders can focus on other emergencies, because we're not making them ourselves. This past few weeks, I got to meet with many legislators across our county and across the state, working on legislation, hoping to address various issues in our county. I also read at Hartford County Public Library for the Fairy Tale and Superhero Fest, which was fun. I have plenty of experience reading books, so it wasn't too out of the ordinary for me, but it was still very enjoyable, and thank you to all the library workers who helped put that together. I attended and was a sponsor of the NAACP MLK Freedom Brunch that happened this past weekend, myself and Council President were both there, and that was a really great event, it's continuing to grow, it's now at Hartford Community College. We had people from all over the state come out, including our state public defender, who was a keynote speaker, that was a really great event. A few events coming up that are worth keeping on your calendar, on January 18th, at 6:00 PM, the Board of Education is having their Budget Public Info Session at the Board of Education. That's an opportunity for you as a citizen to share the things that you want to see in the Board of Education's budget. You know, the Board of Education is that accountability force, that accountability mechanism for how that money's spent, so it's very important you tell them, and not us, what you want the Board of Ed to do with their money. That being said, on January 23rd, at 6:00 PM, the county executive is having their Budget Town Hall at Hartford Community College. That's when you get to tell the county executive where you want him to send all of his money, and how much money to give to the different organizations, both within the county government and outside the county government, like the Board of Ed, libraries, the sheriff's office, and please, you know, be that, it's the one time, the whole year, you get to share public comment directly to the county executive in person, so I really encourage people to take advantage of that on the 23rd at HCC. On the 26th, the Orioles will be host at Hopkins Farm Brewery from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, January 26th. Come to Havdi Grace, see the Baltimore Orioles, enjoy some food or a beverage from 4:00 to 6:00. That's going to be a lot of fun, and I know, I'm looking forward to that. And then on February 3rd, at the Havdi Grace Opera House, will be the Langston Hughes Youth Oratorical Contest from 1:00 to 3:00. My wife and I have gone to that the past few years now, and I mean, it's a real opportunity to witness the brilliance of our children, to hear them speak, and to hear their writing is just really something to look forward to, and it's a great celebration of Langston Hughes, who has a local connection, as he would come and visit the Havdi Grace Colored School and teach the children about writing, one of the greatest writers in American history, coming right here to Hartford County, and a friend of the principal. So, that's a really neat piece of Havdi Grace history that is celebrated at the Opera House every year. And then last, I just want to recognize the passing of Ms. Gail Reader, who passed away. She was a life member of the Susquehanna Hose Company. Her and her husband, Bill, have done a lot to support in volunteer work in Havdi Grace and with the Susquehanna Hose Company. They put up a really nice post celebrating her and what she meant to the community, but, you know, my thoughts go out to her family, and her friends, and the community at large. It's sad when we lose those volunteers, and it makes it all the more important to thank them when you can, and also to join them if you can, because our volunteers don't last forever, it's, you know, somebody else's turn to help carry that legacy. So, that's all for tonight, Mr. President.
That was quite a bit. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, and I appreciate it. You mentioned the NAACP's breakfast or brunch for Martin Luther King, nearly 500 in attendance. That was a huge event. But I also want to thank our DPW workers, our public safety partners, State Highway Administration, again tonight, as I did this past Thursday night, with the fact that they just, they're out keeping us safe through these storms, and as Mr. Bennett said, we are expecting more bad weather toward the end of the week. I want to thank Mary Hassler for the opportunity to read to the young children at the library. I picked a book called The Ugly Duckling, if you can believe that, so that's very fitting.
I believe.
You're going to say The Ugly Carver, right? You know, Jeannie and I both want to express our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Robin Burdette, Roger Lefler, Tony Mioli, and Gail Reader. I graduated with both Gail and Roger in '72, and knew the Readers very well, and Tony Mioli, I can't think of a better individual. Every time I think of him, I think of his arms wide open with this huge smile, willing to help anybody that needed it. Gave a lot of children, for a lot of kids, their first opportunity, working at McDonald's. And then Robin Burdette, just totally blown away by this, had no idea that she was not well, and all of them will be missed by many people, I can tell you. So, we ask for you to keep their friends and family, and your thoughts and prayers. And then on January the 23rd, we will have a special legislative session in these chambers for the sole purpose of resolution for the county's annual bond sale, 2:00 PM in these chambers. So, wanted to make everyone aware of that, and with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.